Order of the Special Board of Selectmen Meeting. All right, so the Pledge of Allegiance. Is there any public comment? I'll ask if there's any public comment. Once again, this is for the Special Board of Selectmen Meeting regarding the appropriation of our transfer. So is there any public comment regarding that? No public comment? Okay. Item number four, to consider a supplemental appropriation of Transfer Control Number 11 regarding an increase of waste collection usage. Can I have a motion? Oh, wait, go ahead, Rich, sorry.
This is actually a special comment?
Oh, that's right, so.
This is a special comment, and so you need a form of.
Oh, I'm so, you're so in hand being here for that.
Yeah, but when you were calling the order, you're actually calling, you're not just calling the special comment for.
Yep.
And then, uh, so you can't pick, you can pick which two, but you're not going to have a form.
No.
So the motion, part of the motion should be to move from the item to the board's.
For a selectmen.
And when you have it on your agenda, then when you state that there's no form, you could also note that it is not defined by climate weather conditions.
Okay. You want to make the motion?
He's a professional town moderator.
Let me have my professional town moderator make that motion. So there is no quorum.
That there is no quorum due to weather and other circumstances and that this item be referred to the Board of Selectmen for their possible action.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Chris Bowen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Absene? Chair votes aye, motion carries four, zero, zero. Yep, I just got adjourned, I need to have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Pat Lombardi, second by Al Bruno. Okay, that's the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. All right. Call the Board of Selectmen Meeting for August 17th.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which stands one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice.
Item number three, public comment. Is there any public comment? Public comment going three times. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the July 29th, 2021 special meeting?
So moved.
Motion by Pat Lombardi, second by Al Bruno. All in favor?
Aye.
Absane's? Nope. Chair votes aye, motion carries seven, zero. Move the minutes from the August 3rd, 2021 regular meeting? What did I say?
Seven.
August 3rd, 20.
Six, zero.
Six, zero, what did I say?
Seven.
Six, uh, sorry, six, zero, sorry. Put the minutes from the August 3rd, 2021 regular meeting. Thank you. Motion by Trish.
Second.
Second by Pat Lombardi. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Absane's? Nosed. Chair votes aye, motion carries six, zero. Thank you. Thank you. First selectwoman's report, I attended the Eagle Court of Honor for Cody Kellogg this past Saturday. It was quite an honor and quite a thing. I know why you like them now, do you know?
Yeah.
Wow. Amazing.
Leclair would be proud.
Leclair would be proud, I thought it from what we're doing yet. Last night, we held the swearing-in ceremony for the Seymour Fire Department Officers in Commission. It went well, I think everybody had a good time. Thank you to the selectmen that showed. Selectman Lombardi, Bowen, and Manigan. It was, it was, it was a great show, and then we went to Jimmy's afterwards, so that was nice. Um, just a couple of things in regards to the road projects in town. There were several complaints put in regarding the curbing on streets or the lack of curbing, as well as pooling of water from the storms this past Saturday. We have informed the town engineer and they are working with the contractor to address the residents' concerns. The whole brick easements are all set. Um, the attorney generals have signed off on them, we're very happy about that. We will be going out to bid in the fall and the work will start in the spring of 2022. So that's great. Bungie and West Street, um, we are waiting on money on that and they're going out to bid. That will be completed, um, in 2023. That is a big project. The DOT project for Bank Street and River Street, the, the work will most likely be done the summer of 2022. We'll go out to bid this fall. They're possibly going to be doing some heavy patching on Pearl Street. Brian is also looking at a roads list for 2022 and has started with the following roads: DeWolf, Hillside, Washington, Ansmore, Brookdale Terrace, and Seymour. There will be more roads to come, um, and we will be looking for the board's input on that. Okay? Um, last Thursday, we placed a mask mandate on all town buildings due to increase of the COVID cases. With this, what this mandate means is that we are requiring all visitors, employees, and municipal buildings to wear a mask when they're in areas with other employees or dealing with the public. When in office by themselves, they do not need to wear a mask. The fire departments will be required to wear a mask when they're inside their buildings, on scenes, or going to fi- or in their fire trucks. Masks do not need to be worn when they're outside. As far as the schools and the students, the governor stated in his executive order that students are to wear masks for at least the first month of school. The Board of Ed Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent cannot overrule the governor. He puts these executive orders in place and we have to follow them. Municipal leaders also have the option of requiring masks to be worn by everyone in public places regardless of vaccination, vaccination status within their respective towns. I am leaving this decision to business owners. That is up to them what they want to do. Uh, one last thing is I think it's important to remember that not only on this board, but all boards elected and appointed ultimately work for the residents of Seymour. At that, at times will be asked difficult and frustrating questions. Regardless of our opinions, we have a duty to explain and respond respectfully to all questions, even if we disagree. We will not be able to tell people what, we may not always be able to tell people what they want to hear, but we must still communicate it, it is our duty. So we must respond to them. Um, I was approached by a couple people with some boards not responding to them when asked questions. So I have in my selectmen's report? Not my selectwoman's report, sorry. Action number, item number seven, in lieu of a special town meeting regarding the supplemental appropriation of Transfer Control Number 11 regarding the increase in waste collection usage, we did not have a quorum, so it's now being moved to this board.
Motion to approve Control Number 11 in the amount of $123,736.20 for trash.
Motion by Pat Lombardi, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Al Bruno, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Maze? Absane's? Chair votes aye, motion carries six, zero. Thank you. Discussion and take possible action regarding, um, the 824 Revolts of Planning and Zoning Commission regarding the proposed acquisition of the open space land at 15 Bridle Path Lane. Rich?
So when this subdivision was approved, sometime ago, there were parcels, uh, semi-sized for potential open space. There is a six acre parcel on Bridle Path that, um, is owned by Arwell LLC. And Arwell, uh, has offered to transfer the six acre parcel to open space, uh, to the town. In order to do that, in order to acquire properties, you all know by now, it has to be referred to planning and zoning for a change of, uh, backup documents, the title report, uh, in the, uh, legislature. But I would ask, uh, for motion to send this to the planning or 824.
So moved.
Motion by Pat Lombardi, second by Chris Bowen, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Absane? Chair votes aye, motion carries six, zero. Thank you. Um, this, item number nine, discussion and take possible action regarding the Small Cities Grant Consultant Award. In your packet, uh, we sent over to you, the one RFP that we received in regards to that. Did you find it?
Yep.
Um, the, they're asking that we, I may not have it in my packet. Okay, Steven, I got it. Um, they're requesting that, the only, we got in was from a Tom M. Foley, and they're requesting that we go with him. That is their suggestion?
Who's there again?
Uh, it would be Dee, because she handles all our small city community and county.
Just want to make sure.
Sorry, I normally say the names.
Yep.
So they're asking that we go with Tom Foley. As you know, Lisa Lowe, um, has retired and Tom Foley has taken over a lot of her cases. Can I have a motion? Motion by Trish.
Second.
Second by Rob, discussion?
Um, we only had one, I'm assuming we followed whatever normal protocol is for putting this out. What was the duration? Uh, is there, did we approach anyone, or is this, uh, what we expected?
We put out the request for a proposal and it was out for the, a lot of the amount of time. And this, if you remember, this is the last one, we opened it and we didn't get any back. We were supposed to open it beforehand. It was opened, we sent it back out, so we actually extended it for two additional weeks. And this is the only that we received.
All right, and.
Thank you.
Prices, um, that they spelled out are in line with, that, that's competitive for what?
Competitive. Same basic pricing as our last consultant.
Okay.
So Dee and Tony are, are happy with that submission and they talked to him and they interviewed him and.
They're happy with him and that's who they were hoping was going to send in.
Great, I'm good then, I trust their judgment.
Anybody else? Can I, all in favor?
Aye.
Absane's? Maze? Chair votes aye, motion carries six, zero. Thank you. Discussion and take possible action regarding forwarding of Giraffe Marijuana Ordinance to the Ordinance Committee. In your packet, we had received a, I sent to you, it was the, uh, from our Land Use Attorneys, and it was an ordinance that they are using and we want to, on marijuana, and we want to forward it to our Ordinance Committee to take a look at it.
Second.
Motion by Trish, second by Pat Lombardi, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Maze? Absane's? Chair votes aye, motion carries six, zero. Thank you. I just want to, um, make a motion to add to the agenda. I do have somebody here from the Union Cemetery Library that if you have any questions, she would be able to offer, so I'd like to put that on the agenda. Motion by Trish.
So, uh, second.
Second by Chris Bowen, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Can you introduce yourself?
I was just here to answer any of your questions on previously presented material. I wasn't here, I was editing the voices. And, uh, I honestly didn't know in our bylaws, but I handed in to the attorney, if there was anything about food or anything in there, it amazed me, since they were made back in the 1800s and early 1900s. But in any event, after talking with Rory, and he presented, you know, the concerns and most of which was in the newspaper, uh, he said to town, you know, it's one thing to take it over for maintenance and us donating. So twenty-two years later, um, I'm down to just two elderly, my age, 70s, um, and they really don't know anything about the books. And so with the funds, we don't, I think we did one sale in the past couple years. Rory suggested if the town were to take it, that we could take the sign down, so there would be more sales. And I found Dennis McNamara, he has a section who handles burial in cemeteries around here. I believe he's setting a section for about a half thousand cemeteries. He also owns Freeport Burial Vault Company, so he knows all the funeral records and everything. And he said he would be happy to take over the job, take the books. He's very familiar with them, because I've talked to him over many, many years. And the few burials we do have, I mean, there were a couple years in the last ten, we had none. I think one year we had three. That was a lot. Most people, I have no contacts for other than maybe 10 people in the cemetery. I lived in Seymour and Derby Avenue my whole 73 years. The, uh, so I very rarely see anybody there. Uh, there probably won't be that many more burials. There's no in-town really coming in if we don't have a burial, and that's only a few hundred dollars that there's even, you know, offset cutting the grass. So it's a depleting amount.
Okay.
So the two trustees and I would be very happy if the town took the lead and maintenance would be funded. And as long as, you know, there was a letter put there that they recognized Dennis McNamara, a Freeport Burial Vault at Sexton, and he would send in any takeover of our burials to the town for that title is going on. And, uh, you know, as far as the bylaws, uh, anyone who bought a plot that month, I never fear of anybody complaining about anything. And if there was someone to contact, Danny, on a matter, he would discuss it with them. So it really is running along smoothly, but it would be a shame that I grew up on Derby Avenue and, uh, to have a cemetery if it ran out of money. If something happened to me, the other two board members really wouldn't know what to do. They have a hate field there and nobody's taking care of it. So we can't say it's inactive, but it's extremely little and, you know, five, 10 years from now, it probably won't be.
Rob?
Uh, how many plots do you have left? What, what would be max capacity? How many, how many more?
Oh, I've never calculated that. I, uh, the town Seymour has a plot of 155. And so that plot, um, town is paying a small side of $800 a year and it's paying for maintenance. And the town, once a year, takes their brush cutter along riverbank, you know, to keep everything back. Uh, plots, um, you know, there's, there's some plots in hundreds that have never been used. They can't really be resold. I don't know, maybe, maybe there's 50, 100. It depends, because each plot can be used for two people, one cremation and one burial.
Okay, thank you.
But there would not be any sale, you know, that was agreed upon, town, but there would be no further sales.
Selectman Lombardi?
Yeah, excuse me, maybe I missed it, but could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Certainly. Corinne, C-O-R-R-I-N-E, Sorrentino. And I'm the president of the Cemetery Association since 1999. And, uh, I use a post office box, so you too would see more of my address, but I would not like to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I, I just had one. So why, what's the rationale behind the town not being able to sell any more plots in the future? What's the feeling?
That was Rory's suggestion that the town wants no involvement with the cemetery.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
It was just, you know, suggested that the town didn't want anything but maintenance.
Yes, that is the.
And.
I was just curious if there was something that was left to you in terms of, we don't want to, don't do anymore, or, yeah.
I, I thought the town might want the income if any plot sold.
Yeah.
I was always, you know, they didn't want responsibility, so that's why Dennis McNamara was handling it and was capable.
Yes.
I don't think you can answer this, but Al, would that bylaws still have to be updated for the town's protection if we discussed and agreed?
It, it'd probably be a good idea to update them and take a look at them. Um, that's, you know, Rich, what do you think? Or do you want to leave it alone just to cut the grass, or?
It depends how we're doing. We're not acquiring the union, uh, I think, are you a corporation?
We are, and it has to be dissolved.
The Union Cemetery Corporation, we're not acquiring the stock, we're not acquiring the corporation. The interest of the union, uh, the attorneys, or the association, uh, insisted that we comply with the bylaws, not that we, they're not our bylaws.
Right.
The bylaws present a bit of a problem.
Right.
So, so, um, the short answer, my short answer without consulting with council on the side of answering, you were not answering.
Yeah, Trish, yeah.
Or Trish.
Yep.
The short answer is no, we don't have to comply. Our idea about acquiring this and stepping up and assuming this plot is related to the town, that has its thought or express an interest in, of what we do out of a sense of duty to the community, um, was to simply acquire it and maintain it, to use the remaining funds, uh, almost as a trust on to the maintenance of the cemetery on a ongoing basis.
So the dissolution of the corporation, not dissolve the bylaws?
Mm-hmm, that's what I.
We think.
Yeah, but that's on them, once they do the property, that's on them, that corporation, I'm sure they would resolve it if they convey the money to the town, to the state actions, the government uses that going forward, if they're sending them with a trust on, uh, that, I'm assuming they would resolve this corporation, but that's on them, that's not on our side of it. And those bylaws, we have no continuing, uh, stuff on maintenance of, of the cemetery that, there were two ways to do it. Either operate it, which presents certain problems, or either not operate it, and they can maintain it, that.
Corinne?
Interview with the attorney that was going to handle, and that is what the attorney was going to handle, as a person, Brian McLaren, who wanted to call the attorney from the town, uh, and he's talking to, reason he got in the time was to handle, so the corporation was involved properly.
Mm-hmm.
So that the funds that are right now in mass mutual, uh, will get transferred to the town after he's finished up the few expenses with the attorney and stuff. And that, uh, as I understand it, the way your attorney is willing, the bylaws will be dissolved with the corporation. And so the town would assume, they already did title search and everything.
Mm-hmm.
The town would own the property and maintain it, and Sexton would take care of any free burial.
Thank you.
Good question, though, so now we're on the same page.
Any other questions?
Yep.
Do you want to have a mausoleum built and all the first select persons need to go there from now on?
You can renovate the building here.
As long as you're putting the bill, no problem.
Yeah, no, no, I'm not going into any ground things, yeah. I'm going to be preserved. I just planted it up.
Is that a statue of her? No, that's her, they, okay, Walt.
Sit in my daughter's house forever. All right, thank you, Corinne, for coming down.
Was there anything else, um, that you would need?
No, I don't think so.
Will this be carried over to another meeting then?
Nope.
Well, we, we will, we will bring up through the council and consider. If you, if anyone's understanding, they can put together a document.
Great.
So I should just instruct her what I just told you.
Yep.
Dissolving corporations, making arrangements to turn to the town, and something about maintenance and recognizing Dennis McNamara as a section. Is that all I could explain to her?
You can explain after, but let me know that Brian McLaren will be, like, put together something and tell us. The, um, the issue while we're done with Sexton, um, I mean, it sounds worded, but we're going to have to verify that and whatever it's presented, if he desires and, so, and we are putting issues on that, but we will, uh, have her second call from Brian and we'll start it, do the call.
I'm sure you can have information from any of the channel directors who worked with him, and his company's been around for years, I would so, that's all I would say. Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 11, executive session personnel clerical union contracts, can I have a motion to go into?
Before we do that, you don't, you can go to executive, it's changing the treaty information, but what you do is you just, um, recess to me, we have what is known as now, in waiver law, where they're non-mediated of the body, they're not, and it's appropriate on the treaty information law for all of us to get together and discuss it, and then come back and you call the unions to order again, uh, and maybe you take whatever asks you need to do. But you don't need to go into executive session for, for strategy, maybe with, uh, selected volumes and, uh, whether it was, and, and non-mediated.
So a motion to recess.
Second motion to recess?
You may do a second.
Pat Lombardi, second by Rob Manigan, will go into recess at 7:25. convene our meeting at 7:59 PM. Thank you for telling me about this.
Come on, Bruno, you're holding up the show here.
I don't know what you did to the door, so, but you need to go shut the door.
Mr. Perry's on top of that.
Mr. Pelosi's on top.
Pelosi, yeah. Uh, I'd like to move to approve the successor Town Hall Collective Bargaining Agreement with a term from July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2025, and to request the funds necessary to implement such agreement.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Chris Bowen, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Absane's? Chair votes aye, six, zero. Thank you. Number 13 appointments, there are no appointments.
Uh, I saw two in the packet.
Yes, you are correct.
Recreation and, uh, culture and arts. I've got it on page 16.
Thank you. I don't have a full packet. Okay. Diane Ricardi Culture and Arts Commission, an appointment is for three years, it expires 8/17/2024.
So moved.
So moved by Chris Bowen, second by Mr. Lombardi, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I didn't do motion, sorry. Uh, discussion? No, all in favor? Chair votes aye, six, zero. Joe Lorera Recreation Commission, appointment is for two years, term expires 8/17/2023, cover motion? Motion by Trish, second by Pat Lombardi, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries six, zero. Tax refunds and abatements in your packet is the checklist? Not the tax refunds and abatements, did I miss that packet too? All right. Stephen's tired. Can you all look over the tax refunds and abatements and to make sure there are no issues? Make a motion to approve of the, I don't know. Trish makes a motion?
Second.
Second by Rob Van Egan, all, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, six, zero. Transfers, Stephen, I don't have a whole packet, by the way. Transfers? Thank you. Transfer, there's only one, it's transfer number, nope, that was from the collection one, so there are no transfers. Correspondence, there's no correspondence. Public comment? Public comment? No public comment. Selectman's comment? Selectman Bowen?
I'm very dismayed at the temperature of what happened yesterday at the Board of Education meeting. It is one thing to disagree with a policy, whether it's our policy, whether it's the governor's policy. It's another thing to go to a board filled with volunteers and scream at them, and to scream at passersby, um, calling them names, calling them F-words, et cetera. We need to lower the temperature of our discourse, because yelling is not going to do anything to address any concern. All that does is make people angry, and frankly, it would harden my resolve, if anything, just speaking personally. We need to start talking to each other, not yelling at each other, because what happened yesterday at the Board of Education meeting was completely unacceptable, and needs to stop.
Thank you, Mr. Van Egan.
Uh, I want to start off by saying, uh, this past weekend was a chance to shine. I've, uh, tried to plug it before, um, to help the Parent-Child Resource Center, and it was at Quarry Walk in Oxford. Uh, well attended, and I think they did very, very well, and, uh, want to thank everybody's support for that event. A wonderful cause, especially coming out of COVID, uh, last year when we had talked about it, when it went virtual, uh, considering how many people were stuck home with abusers, uh, to, kind of, what's going to piggyback on to what happened at Board of Ed, concern over children just being at home, and, uh, the trauma they've gone through. Um, to, uh, echo what, um, Selectman Bowen just said, I love that people are passionate enough to be involved and come to meetings. Again, the, uh, way that it is happening, um, needs to be checked. Um, I, I like people getting involved in what's happening, being concerned about their kids, whatever the reason. But make sure that they, uh, do a little research to see who has what powers, what they can do, um, you know, I think it was mentioned before, that what power the Board of Ed has, uh, and what the state mandates, where they can control things. Um, and just, you know, we, we can have a reasonable discourse about what's happening. So I just want everyone to try to be as respectful, because everybody's dealing with a lot, you know? Whether you want masks or don't want masks, there, there's a lot, a lot going on, a lot of concern. That aside, Delta variant is a thing, you can see we're all masked up again, um, so let's try to do our best to make sure this one gets squashed even quicker than the last one. Masks, hand washing, uh, social distancing as best you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Selectman Bruno? Oh, sorry.
Here's Xander's update.
Oh, Xander's doing wonderful, he's, he's, he's a joy.
Thank you.
Selectman Bruno, please. Bruno?
Good, thank you.
Um, I was able to go to a chance to shine on Saturday, which was a great event for a very good cause, so, um, you know, it, it was very well attended, too, very well attended, hard to get a parking spot.
Mm-hmm.
Um, also, you know, I was going to mention, I happened to be watching the news last night, and my heart broke when I saw how things were handled in Seymour. We were on the news for the wrong reason. Um, this is not our community, this is not who we are, and this is really, this is a tough one, right? We have to respect that we have differences of opinions, and I'm just asking, you know, look, folks, you, you do have to know where powers lie, you do have to understand that, um, you know, listen, I, I respect people for whatever opinion they have, and it's tough for me, because, you know, I'm one of those folks that is very concerned about, you know, contracting COVID, whether it's, you know, classic COVID, Delta version. The issue is, in having that respect, if you're not really buying into it, and, and you don't want to wear a mask, you can't wear a mask, you can't, you don't want to have your kids wear a mask, I just ask for some understanding that there are folks out there that are just simply terrified, and it's really going to affect their well, well-being, and we have to protect everybody and be considerate of our neighbors. So, you know, science is a thing, you, you have to read up, and, and I don't want to pass judgment on anybody, I really don't, but we do have to be more respectful, and I don't, I don't like what I saw last night, and just ask, we've got to do better, we've got to do better, we have to be more respectful, and you know, unfortunately, like it or not, people are trying to make decisions for everybody's benefit, and, and protect each other, and even protect those that, when they really believe in something, even if somebody else does not. And I'm just going to get off my soapbox now. Um, I just want to see us do better, because every time Seymour's in the news, it's exciting when it's great, and it just puts a bad light on us, tenfold over, when it's behavior, and for things like happened last night.
Well, I wasn't there, I can just, uh, echo your comments and the other board's members' comments, um, you know, we're volunteers, and I think you hit the nail right on the head when you said, "respect", and there's a right way to go about it, and there's a wrong way to go about it, and last night was an example of the wrong way to go about it. And it needs to get toned down, and it needs to get toned down real quick, okay? There is no board in this town that should be subjected to those kind of actions. And so help me, there, it's a good thing that I wasn't there, because I probably would have launched a scud missile on them. Absolutely no reason in the world. We are all human beings, we have a right to agree and to disagree, but we need to do two things. Number one, respect each other's position. Number two, let's see if we can come up with a consensus, okay? Instead of bad-mouthing volunteers, volunteers. They don't get paid. Respect them, respect them for their decisions, especially when some of those decisions, okay, are not decisions that they made, that are mandated at the state level. So I'll get off my, my wagon on that. Um, Kaylee Carson, who presented her gazebo project to this board, um, I believe back in June, wanted to meet with the Public Works Board in July, unfortunately, due to vacations and other, we were not able to have her, but, um, with Steve's, uh, assistance, um, Kaylee's mother was at our meeting in August, and, um, went over the whole presentation very briefly again. Um, there have been a couple of setbacks, but, um, on, on her end, but we assured her that Public Works, uh, will be more than willing, uh, to help her and accommodate her in the flattening of those areas that are needed, so that, uh, she can complete her project, which I believe is going to start in, um, early September, I believe.
Okay.
So, and last but not least, um, last evening, we had our swearing in ceremony of our chiefs, assistant chiefs, captain, line officers, and some other awards, um, that were given out, uh, for efforts made by some of our other public officials during the COVID nineteen major crisis, which started in March, well-deserved. Um, certainly want to thank you, Ann Marie, for putting that together, uh, and I certainly hope that, um, this continues in the future. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, and with that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.
Motion by Chris Bowen, second by Pat Lombardi, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries six, zero. Note the meeting closed at eight, ten, twelve P. M.
Thank you.